Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting to order as you please stand for the pledge to the flag.
(inaudible)
I pledge the allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have approval of minutes, February 1st work session, February 8th regular meeting, and February 22nd discussion meeting. Is there a motion on the minutes?
Submove.
A second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Bunns?
Yes.
Mr. Summerfield?
Yes.
Mr. Randazzo?
Yes, motion is carried. Public comment, agenda items, anyone wishing to speak on any agenda item this evening?
I've got one, I've got two bets.
Sure.
It's on Sands Ring and also on Maplehurst.
Okay.
First, I want to thank Supervisor Randazzo and the board for their work towards restoring Sands Ring Homestead. The significance of this project to Cornwall, I believe, is self-evident, but if there were doubt, please attend the presentation by Johns Givens from the Smithsonian Institute, who coincidentally is speaking at Munder Cottage on Monday, March 28th at 7:00 p.m. on the importance of cultural and historic preservation. I would think that Sands, Sands Ring fits in this category. As for our newfound progress in the Sands Ring Restoration Project, in my opinion, it simply changed an attitude from reactive to proactive should receive the credit. As supervisor, you are often responsible for setting the tone, so let me give credit where it is due, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now, I'll ask you to consider another area that, again, in my opinion, is in need of attitudinal adjustment, and that is the board's position towards community growth and development. To date, I believe the town board has acted reactively, and our community has paid the price. Some examples, we have a high school within the Windsor zip code where the taxpayer paid for and continues to pay for a football field where not one game will ever be played, ever. When the high school moved away from downtown, so did a large segment of business customers. Helen owned a deli on Main Street at the time, and she informed me that her gross income dropped by 50% after the high school move. The deli eventually closed, and now Main Street no longer supports a deli-type business. We have a quote zombie building at 296th Main Street, a foreclosed bank-owned property which is in poor repair and should be considered a quote black eye for our downtown. Consequently, it is a literal structural problem for the buildings to join. The infamous well field on Route 32, where the taxpayer is financing the town's cost of ongoing litigation. That same taxpayer should consider that at least two commercial developers proposed projects for that parcel before KJ acquired the land. The developers were met with a negative reception, so now we all pay a greater cost for the parcel that we can ever expect to collect in tax income revenue. These are outcomes of a recent quote no-growth posture, examples of position which has resulted in a negative perception of Cornwall for business, where the cost of doing business outweighs the benefits. That is not our history. In fact, Cornwall has historically embraced commerce and was rewarded with infrastructure, such as our hospital and our town pool, housing to accommodate population growth, and retail businesses to support the community. Before suburban sprawl, focused growth was historical standard, and now I would strongly suggest the answer to many community issues. Popularly known as smart growth, defined by the Hudson Valley Pattern for Progress, a local planning and research think tank has quote focused growth where there is existing infrastructure, transit, and amenities that may prove attractive to primarily but not limited to millennials, in an effort to create a resource, a resurgence of growth in these areas and yet avoid prior patterns of sprawl while protecting the region's environment. Additionally, another key element of smart growth is planning, particularly long-term proactive planning. The town of Cornwall has a comprehensive plan, but it seems to me that this board ignores our own plan. I suggest that this time this board reflects on the research and empirical evidence in the comprehensive plan in order to inform our decisions. Additionally, our new chairperson of the Town Economic Development Committee donated a book to the supervisor's office. It's titled The Smart Growth Manual. I suggest everyone take the time to read through this book. Finally, when the town board considers the zoning change for the Maplehurst property, are we only voting to quote make concessions just to benefit the developer, or are we actively planning our future of our community? If we are actively planning, planning smartly, then we realize all the benefits. I suggest that the proposed development of the Maplehurst property, reduced to 13 parcels, is an example of focused growth and supported by our comprehensive plan. Finally, as for examples of density similar to this proposed project, we need look no further than across the street from Town Hall, or walk downtown, or walk west of Maple Avenue, or throughout the entire village. Again, I suggest our history provides the answer to our future.
Anyone else wishing to comment on any agenda items? Yes, Gary.
Did I just understand that you are proposing that 13 houses be built on the Maplehurst property?
I am not proposing 13 houses.
No, not you, they are proposing.
Excuse me? I concur that 13 houses would benefit.
Okay, okay, well, I respectfully, I have a problem with that. I think that the zoning, as it's now written, is for six and a half acre single-family We, as a neighborhood, as a small community, who live in that area, don't want that built the way you propose. We had a petition of 100 plus people, and we'll come back with more signatures, 200 if it takes. I don't know what we have to do as citizens to convince you that we don't want to live next to that. What do we have to do?
I suggest that the evidence suggests otherwise.
Where do you live?
I respect your opinion.
Where do you live?
I live right down in the village.
You live down in the village?
That's correct.
Okay. I live next to this. Why should I have to live next to something that you're never going to have to look at?
I'm in the area that's walking distance to many amenities in my town. That was the reason I bought the house in the first place, and my children benefited from that. And that is what the current market and the historical market is looking for.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you, Dick.
Yes.
We don't want it built.
Joe, as you know, we're still apart. Mr. Russell, what benefits is this going to generate for the town?
Again, we're trying to avoid, in my opinion, sprawl by spreading out, as opposed to having what's known as walkable communities, which is the, again, the historical precedent, and it's also the popular future. That's what people are looking for now in this market.
So, these 13 houses, seven houses, it's really seven because it's, that's, seven more than six is all the extra that's going to be. That's going to greatly enhance Main Street. Leslie Dotson, your planner, when they wanted 31, wrote a letter saying 31 houses wouldn't do anything for Cornwall. When the comprehensive plan was written, 17 vacant lot, uh, buildings were vacant on Main Street. Now there's a couple. Probably the people at the Maplehurst come down to the town and buy stuff more than those people are going to be at that place. So, again, we do not want it. I'm going to read some in a minute. And where you live, say, if somebody split every house in your neighborhood and put a house, would you be for that? Would you be for that zoning where everybody could split their lot and build a house in your neighborhood?
Again, the proposal that's in front of us is what we're talking about.
Right, but that's what I'm saying. We don't want that. And let me read some here. This is from the code. This isn't from comprehensive plan or nothing. This is under site development review. Objectives in considering and acting upon site plans, the board shall take into consideration the public health, safety, welfare, and comfort and convenience of the public in general, and of the residents of the proposed development and of their immediate neighborhood in particular, and may prescribe such appropriate conditions as safeguarded as be required in order that the result action shall. In particular, that's why when somebody wants to change the zoning on something, they have to send certified letters to everybody in that whole area so they can come in and tell you what, if they want it or not. Every single person that touches that property, has crossed property, street from that property, signed that petition, and then the circle gets bigger and bigger. You do not want that.
And no doubt the same passion went into the protest against the developments on Route 32. Is there any regret for that now? Do you have any regret for that?
No.
You prefer to have the well fields?
It...
You have no regret?
We're not, yes, they're not going to come and take...
It is not segmented. It's all part and parcel of the same thing. The idea is, the idea is the same passion went into that argument. If they could take it back, I wonder how many people would want to take it back now? We're paying the price, you and I, are paying the price for it. If you don't agree, that's fine. I disagree, you disagree. We can agree, there's five people sitting up here, not one.
I don't like... Thank you, Gary.
But again, we're talking about this property. We're not talking about 32, if that's how you want to change it around. And we don't want it. And right here in your code, where it says immediate neighborhood in particular, we're telling you we don't want it. We gave you the petition, and we don't want it.
Thank you, Joe.
And it's not going to help the town. If we needed more bedrooms in this town, and that was going to make this town better, Cornwall would be sitting pretty. It's not more bedrooms that we need. Yeah.
I can give you two sides of this argument. My name is Virginia Scott. I live at 36 Well Avenue. I tried to subdivide my property, where basically everyone in my neighborhood was grandfathered, and even with my subdivision, I would have been, my lot would have been larger than everyone in the neighborhood. So, think of me as an investor. Spent a lot of money, wrote the letters, found out that one of my neighbors was friends with the head of the board. Didn't know that, would have brought an attorney. Now I had to put an addition on my house because I'm still, as an investor, trying to obviously, you know, invest in my property and perhaps some sort of a retirement, pay for my children's college. This same property that you're talking about, I'm assessed at $100,200 more than this property that's being developed. So, I hear this concern about the developers. You have individual investors in this town, and I don't see you supporting them, but yet you're going to, you know, you want floating zones and things like that. I had to adhere to the zoning. I want to know why there's a special case for this property. I mean, if I'd known, I would have never wasted my money.
Thank you, Virginia.
Sorry.
Anyone else? Hearing no one, we're going to move on to the agenda. Item number one, resolution to seeker mass gatherings, local law. Oh, wait, we, we had a public hearing at 7:00. We jumped into it. Before we get to one, let's hold the public hearing until after 7:00. Okay, so, let me read the notice of public hearing. Please take notice of town board attending Cornwall on public hearing, 14th day of March 2016, 7:00 p.m. Town Hall 183, New York City, Cornwall. Propose local law entitled Local Law to amend Town Code, Chapter 115A, entitled Public Events, Mass Gatherings, and Audio-Visual Productions. The local law would rename it, repeal, and revise certain portions of it. Copy proposed local laws on file in the office of the town clerk and available for inspection by interested persons during town clerk's business hours. Town board will let the date, time, and place hear all persons interested in the subject matter hereof. Person may appear in person or by agent. All written communications addressed to the board must be received by the board at or prior to the public hearing by order of the town board, Town of Cornwall, Nada McGee, Town Clerk, dated February 12th, 2016. Basically, this is to completely review and modify the law that was on the books for public events, mass gatherings, and audiovisual productions, to sort of streamline it and really eliminate the mass gatherings portion of it for Cornwall. So, I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this proposed local law? Carla?
My name is Carla Missfion. I live at 69 Hasbrook Avenue. My only concern regarding the local law is that I'm wondering in what way recycling will continue to be addressed for large events, because my understanding was that the, one of the original intents of the local law was to ensure that mass gatherings had recycling in place or were obligated to provide recycling at these venues. And with the repealing of the law, I'm concerned that recycling will decrease at large events.
Well, mass gatherings are no longer being regulated by the town at all. Now, mass gatherings take place on private property, so what you're talking about is on somebody's yard, some business or institution's property, and they would be responsible, according to their own lights, for trash removal and recycling and the like. Now, public gatherings, on the other hand, continue to be regulated by the town. Those would be any gatherings in parks, streets, whatever it might be, any public property. And in those instances, the town, in approving the public gathering, one of the specifics in this is a requirement the trash be taken care of and cleaned up, and certainly recycling would be dealt with in the context of that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
My only recommendation is that we continue to use the forms that FCA has given us as far as the audiovisual and the public event. And that does address garbage in that, where they provide us with, you know, who is going to be responsible for trash removal. The only thing that we need, Steve, would be to take the waiver of the fee or the fee application removed from the bond we're holding. And this provides us, as well as contact information, telephone number, just a little more information that we know exactly who to go to, you know, do they need police presence? Do they need road being closed?
All right, what we'll do is, I think we can address that in the policy if we decide to.
Yes.
In the future, outside of the law. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak? Public hearing, hearing no one, is there motion to close the public hearing?
Submove.
A second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call?
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Bunns?
Yes.
Mr. Summerfield?
Yes.
Mr. Randazzo?
Yes, motion is carried. I apologize for not opening the public hearing, as that seemed to vary in the top of the agenda. So, we're now to number one, which is the resolution to seeker mass gathering local law. Whereas the town board has considered the adoption of local law entitled Local Law to amend Town Code, Chapter 115A, entitled Public Events, Mass Gatherings, and Audio-Visual Productions, to rename it, repeal, and revise certain portions of it. And whereas this is an action subject to seeker, whereas the town board is the sole involved agency, assumes lead agency status, and as such, is caused to be prepared a short environmental assessment form in EAF. And whereas the following, following due notice, the town board has conducted a public hearing on proposed local law and heard all persons interested in the subject matter thereof. Now therefore be resolved as follows. One, that supervisors hereby authorize to sign the EAF, and two, that after considering all the information presented to it, including the EAF, the town board determines that the adoption of this local law is in, unless it's an action and adopts a negative declaration attached here too. So, motion?
Submove.
For a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call?
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Bunns?
Yes.
Mr. Summerfield?
Yes.
Mr. Randazzo?
Yes, motion is carried. Item number two, adopt local law mass gatherings, whereas the town board has considered the adoption of local law entitled Local Law to amend Town Code, Chapter 115A, entitled Public Events, Mass Gatherings, and Audio-Visual Productions, to name and repeal and revise certain portions of it. Whereas following due notice, the town board held a public hearing on the proposed local law. Now therefore be resolved as follows, that the town board is hereby adopt the above local law, which said, local law shall be effective upon publication, posted and filed in the office of the Secretary of State in Albany. Is there a motion on the resolution?
Submove.
For a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call?
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Summerfield?
Yes.
Mr. Randazzo?
Yes, motion is carried. Third item is a resolution to set a public hearing for a local law on utility poles. Whereas the town board of Town of Cornwall has a local law before entitled the Local Law to amend Town Code by enacting a new Chapter 139 entitled Utility Poles. And whereas the local law proposes to require utilities that use town highways, streets, roads, and rights-of-way to promptly remove their plants, cables, lines, equipment, and terminals from all the damaged poles, and to further require the prompt removal of double poles once all plants, cables, lines, and equipment and terminals have been removed. Now therefore be resolved as follows. One, that the movement of this resolution is hereby introduce the proposed local law, and two, that a public hearing on proposed local law be set for, and I'm going to look at the calendar, we're going to say April, do the regularity of the 11th at 7:00 p.m., and that due notice of the same is directly given by publication and posting. Is there a motion on the resolution?
Submove.
A second? Just under the discussion, we have had instances in the community where utility comes in, they saw a new utility pole, and the rule basically is that, and generally it's Central Hudson in our community, Central Hudson will transfer over their electrical wires which are at the top of the pole, and they cut off the top part of the old pole that's being replaced, leaving the cable and telephone lines on the old pole. Those utilities are supposed to come in after Central Hudson attached their wires to the new pole, and the last utility that removes their wires is supposed to remove the double pole. The problem is, once Central Hudson does their work, you know, it's a long time before the telephone company or Time Warner Cable come in to actually move their poles. And it creates issues for the town. Number one, certainly it's unsightly, but in addition, it can become a hazard. And coincidentally, while we were working on this, I did have a resident call me, I think on Agnes Street, and for eight to 10 years, been trying to get two double poles removed from the property with no success. So, we're trying with this local law to put some teeth in it from the town, and a procedure where we can then reach out to these, I'm going to say smaller utilities, if you will, to really entice them to come in and remove the poles and clean up the area. And aesthetically, it certainly would be pleasing, and from a safety standpoint, you don't have another pole sitting there that shouldn't be there, that ultimately could deteriorate and create a problem for the, to the public. So, we want to move ahead with this local law and see if we can get it on the books. So, we have motion for a second, further discussion, roll call?
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Bunns?
Yes.
Mr. Summerfield?
Yes.
Mr. Randazzo?
Yes, motion is carried. Next is a resolution pertaining to the wastewater treatment project and bonding to seeker. Whereas, part of an order of consent entered into in New York State D.C., the town board is determined to proceed with certain work in connection with the wastewater treatment plan, including adding a new dechlorination aeration process tank with controlling building and modifying the existing trickling filter, recirculation wear chamber, secondary clarifier, and chlorine contact tank to accommodate the revised hydraulic grade line required for the new process tank and related improvements. Whereas the town would need to borrow funds for the project, whereas the work is being financed by EFC, project number C35333-01-00, and whereas this is an action subject to seeker, now therefore be resolved as follows, that after considering all the information presented to it, including the EAF, the town board determines that it is a type-two action under 6 NYCRR, 617.5C1 and 2. Is there a motion on the resolution?
Submove.
For a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call?
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Bunns?
Yes.
Mr. Summerfield?
Yes.
Mr. Randazzo?
Yes, motion is carried. I believe, Stephen, next month or a later meeting this month, we're going to have further resolutions on bonding.
Yeah, Dick, the, in order to borrow, you need to hold a public hearing on the borrowing. And I understand the board's going to have a special meeting later on this month and force this up to the board, but what I'd like to do is prepare a resolution noticing the public hearing on the borrowing for April, and if you could adopt that resolution, adopt, setting the public hearing for April, I think it would be helpful for the process. We don't have it for tonight because we have to calculate the total amount of fees for consultants, which you're going to want to add to the amount that you're seeking in the borrowing. I've got some papers, a schedule from Russ Budd, which I think we can use to calculate that, and I'll work with Hawkins, Stella, Field, and Wood to put together that public hearing resolution. I think you can meet next Monday, and I can certainly have it for you for then, so, well, I don't know if it's Monday, whatever day you set it for.
16th.
And we'll be... Well, we're meeting Wednesday, work session, but also, we'll be meeting early next week probably on another. All right, well, might people have it for Wednesday if you're meeting this Wednesday?
If we can have it for Wednesday, we can... All right.
I'll see what Hawkins says, but if we can get it for you then, we'll get it for you then, put it on your agenda, if the board's involved.
No, I think that we're going to be meeting for work session, so if this is something... We have to keep this process moving forward in order to work with the state, EFC, to make sure that we get proper funding for the sewer plant, which ultimately can save the town a tremendous amount of money. So, we don't want to do anything to slow the process down, so you have the resolution, we'll start with a special meeting.
I'll circulate it by email as soon as I have it, and whether it's a Wednesday or Monday's meeting, that's for your decision.
Thanks, Stephen. Next item is approved purchase of a new mower. We're building the grounds, but before we do that, I'd like to entertain a motion that we declare the old mower, which is a 2008 Ferris zero-turn mower, Tim, is that correct?
Correct.
Declare a surplus as it will be traded in. Is there a motion to declare that piece of equipment surplus?
Submove.
For a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call?
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Bunns?
Yes.
Mr. Summerfield?
Yes.
Mr. Randazzo?
Yes, motion is carried. On the authorization of the purchase, Tim McCarty, our superintendent builders and grounds, solicited quotes from various vendors, and based on the quote from Newburgh Power Equipment, Tim?
Correct.
Correct? To purchase a SCAG Freedom SFZ 61-30BS, Briggs &amp; Stratton engine, commercial cut 61-inch. The price is $69, $999, minus $2,274 for the mower and the bagger system on the old mower. The cost of the new mower with the new bagger system is $6,400. And Tim recommends the board move forward with that purchase. Part of the money has been appropriated for equipment, and we will transfer some from one of the contract lines to cover the purchase. Is there a motion to approve the purchase? For a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call?
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Bunns?
Yes.
Mr. Summerfield?
Yes.
Mr. Randazzo?
Yes, motion is carried. Look. Next, I just want to note for the record, and then later when we do budget transfers, that the stabilization work that the town board authorized on the Sands Ring Homestead has been completed, and the contractor, Yankee Construction, has submitted their voucher for $20,700 for this stabilization work. And as I said, when we get down to budget adjustments, we'll be making a budget transfer to cover that cost. Next, I'm happy to report that after lengthy negotiations with the PBA, both full-time and part-time unions, the town has reached an agreement with the unions, an agreement that certainly, I think Councilman Russell was involved with for a while, Councilman McGinnis was involved with for a while, and we certainly look at it as being, the old contract is two years expired, carry forward. So, I believe it's a fair contract, both fair for the town and the taxpayers, and also fair for our police department, and pleased that we can move forward. We did get the, in the negotiations, the contract will carry out through 2017, so we're not back in negotiations. Sometime during 2016, we'll actually be able to wait until probably the summer of 2017 to start new negotiations. So, is there a motion to approve the PBA contracts, both part-time and full-time?
Submove.
For a second? Discussion, roll call?
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Bunns?
Yes.
Mr. Summerfield?
Yes.
Mr. Randazzo?
Yes, motion is carried. I have a letter from Girls on the Run. Supervisor Randazzo and board members, please accept this letter as a request for approval for Girls on the Run to hold our non-competitive celebratory 5K event on Saturday, June 16, 2016, at 10:00 a.m. at New York Military Academy. The Girls on the Run 5K is the culmination of the Girls on the Run Hudson Valley 10-week season. Each November and June, hundreds of girls ages eight to thirteen will celebrate their girl power by running 3.1 miles with their coaches, families, friends, teachers, and community members. It's anticipated to have between 900 and 1,000 runners participate in the event. We work closely with Chief Hazard and Highway Superintendent Eugene Connolly. Please see attached map of the 5K course, insurance, and permit. They had asked for a waiver, but with the change of the mass gathering, there is no fee, there's no requirement for that. So, is there a motion to approve the Girls on the Run event?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Bunt?
Yes.
Mr. Summerfield?
Yes.
And Mr. Randazzo?
Yes, motion is carried. Next is a resolution on our STOP DWI program, whereas the County of Orange, on behalf of the Department of Emergency Services, has presented for 2016 STOP DWI intermunicipal agreement between the county and the town of Cornwall, whereas it is the best interest of the town to enter into the agreement with the county, and therefore be resolved as follows. One, the town board hereby agrees to enter into the annexed 2016 STOP DWI intermunicipal agreement between the county and the town. Two, the town board hereby authorizes supervisor to execute the agreement and move, and forward the same to the County of Orange. Is there a motion on the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Bunt?
Yes.
Mr. Summerfield?
Yes.
Mr. Randazzo?
Yes, motion is carried. Next, a resolution pertaining to consultant agreements for the sewer project, whereas the town board, as we see, the attached retainer agreements between the town of Cornwall and Russell A. Bud, and Drake Loeb, PLLC, in connection with the improvements to the Cornwall Sewer Treatment Plant, and whereas these agreements supersede and replace the prior retainer agreements relating to this project, whereas the town board is undertaking to make improvements to the wastewater treatment plant requires consultations and advice in regards to obtaining funding for the same, and therefore be resolved as follows. One, that the town board hereby agrees to enter into the annexed agreements, and two, that the town board hereby authorizes supervisor to execute the same and all documents necessary to effectuate the terms therein. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Discussion, or excuse me, second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Bunt?
Yes.
Mr. Summerfield?
Yes.
Mr. Randazzo?
Yes, motion is carried. Next item is the Willow at Cornwall, it's the Maplehurst property. The developers have been before the town board over the past year or two, I believe, with various proposals. I had met with them earlier this year, and Councilman McGinnis and I met with our attorney and planning consultant to review various zoning issues. One of the issues was the proposals that had been circulated regarding the Willow at Cornwall, and based on the review that we've made, it's my recommendation to the board that we maintain the current half-acre zoning, which has been in place, actually, for some time. There was some confusion as to when the half-acre zoning was put in place. I think some thought that it was 2013, but my understanding now is that it was in place prior to 2013 under the R2 zone, and the only thing that was done with that property was, it was a modification, I guess the way that they describe it, Steve, where the multifamily...
That was the only change.
Use, pardon? That was the only change. It just took out the, I guess, acceptable use, normal use, use by...
That used, they made a special district, there's a separate district in which multiple dwellings are allowed, but the lot area for that district, the district in which Maplehurst is located, did not change at all.
So, basically, it is half-acre zoning, and in looking at it, you know, and understanding the neighbors, understanding the developers' interest in developing it, I think we can all acknowledge that, you know, it's generally an older neighborhood with smaller lots, but at the same time, smaller square foot homes on those lots. And using as a guide, the subdivision that took place right next door to this property a few years back, which that, those subdivisions were created with half-acre lots. So therefore, carrying through, they were half-acre, the zoning has been half-acre there, it hasn't been, it wasn't changed in 2013, that just makes sense for the continuity of the community to continue the half-acre zoning. So, I would just like to have a motion from the board that reaffirms our position that that parcel will remain in R2 and half-acre zoning as presently allowed for in our zoning laws.
So moved. I'll circle.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Russell?
No.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Bunt?
Yes.
Mr. Summerfield?
Yes.
Mr. Randazzo?
Yes, motion is carried. Highland Engine Company has submitted a letter to the town, Fire Department, in respect for request permission to use the town all brands for, and this year's event will be held on Saturday, March 26th, with starting date of 10:00 AM. Thank you for your consideration of this matter. Somebody who all know, Kerry McGinnis, president. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Bunt?
Yes.
Mr. Summerfield?
Yes.
Mr. Randazzo?
Yes, motion is carried. Next is a resolution that I have, this Beaver Dam Lake Water Corporation, they had appeared, I believe, at the assessment hearings back in the fall, and they had made a request, they have a parcel of property that their owners of had no intention to develop, and were asked to be removed from the sanitation charge. And apparently, they received the bill in the tax bills this year, so they have again requested that they be removed from the refuse for paying the charge in the refuse district. I had the building inspector provide a letter to us, said he reviewed the file, and that it's not likely to produce refuse, as it's not developable parcel of land for residential development. So, I have a resolution, whereas the town has received a request from Beaver Dam Lake Corporation, Water Corporation, regarding the vacant lot it owns at 186 Sycamore Drive, section block and lot 210, in town of Cornwall, for exemption for paying refuse benefit district tax, whereas the building inspector has recommended the exemption, explaining the property is 0.31 of an acre, not developable as residential parcel, unlikely to produce refuse. Therefore, be resolved as follows, the town board hereby approves the exemption of the above-described property owned by Beaver Dam Lake Water Corporation for the year beginning January 1st, 2017. Is there a motion on the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Bunt?
Yes.
Mr. Summerfield?
Yes.
Mr. Randazzo?
Yes, motion is carried. We received a letter from the Office for the Aging discussing a law that was signed in 1994 by Governor Cornwall, pertaining to the county office for the aging, and basically dealing with, as a participating agency, requiring them to administer and implement a voter registration distribution program. We had our attorney check with the county. Steve, maybe just give a brief overview of it.
Sure. The statute that they're referring to, the National Voter Registration Act, appears on its face to make any subcontractors of the county office of the aging to be what they call area agencies on aging, which there are certain requirements imposed upon regarding requesting seniors, or asking seniors whether they're registered to vote, and if they're not registered to vote, assisting them in registering if that's what they wish to do. There is a policy regarding the necessity of asking these questions of people, and then there's a program regarding filling out the voter registrations. And you may recall at the workshop, I said, it looks like that the senior bus and the senior dining program would be subject to this, but I have no idea how to implement it, because, well, it's not very practical, people getting on a bus and going to eat and ask if they want to register to vote. So, at the board's direction, I called up the county office of the aging, and I said to them basically what I just told you, and they acknowledged that the statute does appear on its face to make certain municipal services subject to the voter registration requirements, but they said, as a practical matter and implementing it, the county does not require services which are not conducive to voter registration to undertake the voter registration actively. So, you don't have to ask people when they're getting on the senior bus if they want to register to vote, you don't have to, when they're coming in to eat, ask them that. The county may come and require that signage be posted, advising people of the availability of these services, but as of now, under this program, there's nothing that the board needs to do further, except if the office of the aging asks for some cooperation extended to it. You don't need to adopt a policy, you don't need to make the senior bus or the senior dining program do anything.
Okay. So, we can take no action at this point. Thank you, Stephen. Next is a resolution on the 2016 Community Development Block Grant, whereas the town has received fiscal year 2016 Community Development Block Grant for a standby power generator system to be installed at Munder Cottage, whereas the consulting engineers have prepared an implementation schedule for the project, and therefore be resolved as follows, the town board hereby authorizing Goey, Hazard, and Essel Consulting Engineers, DPC, MHE, to proceed with the project as outlined on the next project implementation schedule, but the town board hereby further authorizing Goey, Hazard, and Essel to advertise for bids following preparations, submitting of design plans and specifications to the county of Orange. Is there a motion on the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second, discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Bunt?
Yes.
Mr. Summerfield?
Yes.
Mr. Randazzo?
Yes, motion is carried. Next is a 2016 Title III B, this is actually a second agreement that we have with the county on transportation. I was a little confused, the last month, or last week when we discussed it, but apparently the lease agreement, I think, must have been adopted, I think, late last year for Munder Cottage, but this is actually the second of two transportation grants that we do receive. So, I have a resolution, whereas the town annually enters into a contract with the county of Orange for services for transportation for senior citizens to Munder Cottage and related activities, whereas the town of Cornwall receives the 2016 Title III B Transportation Funding Agreement for Vendor Services from the Office for Aging between the county of Orange and the town of Cornwall, whereas the town board wishes to once again enter into said agreement with the county, and therefore be resolved as follows. One, the town board hereby agrees to enter into the annexed 2016 Title III B Transportation Funding Agreement for Vendor Services between the county and the town, and two, the town board hereby authorizes supervisor to execute the agreement and forward the same to the county of Orange. Is there a motion on the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Bunt?
Yes.
Mr. Summerfield?
Yes.
Mr. Randazzo?
Yes, motion is carried. On committee appointments, I have a letter from Anthony Incano expressing his wishes to continue to serve on the Cornwall Conservation Advisory Council. Is there a motion to reappoint Mr. Incano with the term extending through 12/31/17?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We didn't want...
Two. Discussion?
I liked him.
Roll call.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Bunt?
Yes.
Mr. Summerfield?
Yes.
Mr. Randazzo?
Yes, motion is carried. I also have a letter from Nancy Proyek expressing her interest in joining the Economic Development Committee, and her term would go through 12/31/16. Is there a motion to appoint Nancy?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Bunt?
Yes.
Mr. Summerfield?
Yes.
Mr. Randazzo?
Yes, motion is carried. I have a letter of resignation from Doug Land, "I regret that I tendered my resignation to the Cornwall Economic Development Committee, effective immediately. I'm grateful for having had the opportunity to serve on the board of this organization, and I offer my best wishes for its continued success. Sincerely, Doug Land, former chairman, Economic Development Committee." And we can do both these at the same time.
God bless you.
It's a resignation of one of our part-time bus drivers, so we'll send the other. Is there a motion to accept both resignations?
So moved.
Second.
Move the second. Roll call.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Bunt?
Yes.
Mr. Summerfield?
Yes.
Mr. Randazzo?
Yes, motion is carried. Next, under personnel, the board will be holding, there will be a due process hearing in a personnel matter, and I would like to have a motion that would appoint Chief Todd Hazard as the hearing officer for the hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Bunt?
Yes.
Mr. Summerfield?
Yes.
Mr. Randazzo?
Yes, motion is carried. Resolution on street lighting, whereas the town has received a blanket LED street lighting authority order from Central Hudson, which would authorize Central Hudson to transition streetlight fixtures in need of repair or replacement with an LED footprint, whereas Central Hudson prepared to proceed with the installation of LED lighting fixtures upon receipt of the completed blanket LED streetlight authority order annexed here too, and made part of this resolution, and therefore be resolved as follows, the town board hereby authorizes supervisor to sign and complete the annexed blanket LED streetlight authority order and forward the same to Central Hudson. Is there a motion on the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I have a point to make.
Yes.
They don't actually look for lights that are out, so if there is a light out, you need to report it to either your office or somebody else.
Right. And that's standard, because we have a lot of lights that you drive through town and they're out, and years ago, Central Hudson used to have a crew at night, that actually their job was to ride around and just replace streetlights, but that was cut out years ago. So, we would encourage the residents to call Central Hudson or call supervisor's office if there are streetlights out, and they're there, and we'd be happy to follow up on it. And also, just as a note, which says here, that they are just going to transition these lights, not going to begin a project where they're coming in and just replacing them, it's just going to be, as the lights have to be replaced, so...
And the LED lights are pretty bright, and it's a light, so it's a little, it's like a mismatch until most of the lights are changed over.
Roll call, though.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Summerfield?
Yes.
Mr. Randazzo?
Yes, motion is carried. Let's see, whereas a resolution on the 2017 Community Development Block Grant application program, whereas herefore, the town is determined to apply for a FY 2017 Orange Urban County Community Development Block Grant Program grant, and whereas prior to completing the grant application, required that the town board hold a public hearing for input from the community as to what the town should apply for under the program, and whereas it is necessary for the town board to adopt a resolution formally authorizing and retaining the town's consulting engineers to prepare and file the application, and therefore be resolved as follows. One, that a public hearing on the application for fiscal year 2017 Orange Urban Community Development Block Grant Program, Grant Program is set for, I believe we're going to do this at our work session before the timing, we're going to do it April 4th at seven o'clock. And as you notice, the same is directly given by publication and posting. And two, the town board hereby retains and authorizes the firm to go, he has, or Hessel, consulting engineers to prepare and submit an application for grant on the fiscal year 2017 program. Is there a motion?
Second.
You're second. Roll call.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Bund?
Yes.
Mr. Summerfield?
Yes.
Mr. Rindaz?
Yes, motion is carried. We received a letter regarding the 12th Annual Melissa Fund Sun Run. This is a foundation, organization founded by the Van Dingo family in 2004. And they are planning events on the town hall. Saturday, May 14, 2016, registration at 8:00 a.m., restarts at 9:00. Who says proceeds to some safe public awareness programs of the town of Cornwall and fund construction of shade structures for town of Cornwall and Village of Cornwall Hudson Play Spaces. I believe they're having two routes. The chief has looked at it, and the chief gave me a memo, and appears that there's no need to limit, that we can accommodate the courses.
They changed their second route this year, they reversed it, so they, both routes start the same, one goes a little farther, but eases up things quite a bit, so.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the event?
So moved.
You're second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Bund?
Yes.
Mr. Summerfield?
Yes.
Mr. Rindaz?
Yes, motion is carried. Next, we have a memo from Chief Hazard. We had two tow companies miss calls for service this week, A and R and Incano pursuant to the town code. Both have been removed from the tow list for 30 days, and both companies have been notified. So there's no doubt to the record. New York State DEC Letter Regarding Cornwall Commons. Basically, DEC just sent a letter out that's referenced reappraisal of engineering report plans and specifications for sanitary sewer extension to serve Cornwall Commons, Town of Cornwall, Orange County. Basically describes a program, and apparently there are timelines, and they had to apply it for an extension.
Yeah, they have their infrastructure improvements in place, and if you don't begin work within a certain amount of time, they would expire, so this could be an extension on that.
Okay, so just note that in the record. Memo from Chief Hazard, respectfully request the town board consider purchasing Ford Utility Police Interceptor, state contract price 29,000, $609 from the four tell Ford budgeted funds to replace one vehicle this year. Typical turnaround time for the dealership ranges from three to five months. As you're aware, two vehicles were declared surplus at February board meeting and have since been listed for sale on Doc, on GovDell. They've both been sold, I think, Chief.
Yeah.
Yes.
Good, so we'll be getting some revenue from those. Is there a motion to authorize the chief to move forward with the purchase of the police vehicle?
So moved.
Second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Bund?
Yes.
Mr. Summerfield?
Yes.
Mr. Rindaz?
Yes, motion is carried. Next, Pam, bookkeeper, has given the list of 2015 final budget adjustments, and again in preparation of the annual audit. In addition, the board to act on, she got 2015 budget transfers, transfer of $10,848 from capital account H39 revaluation to general fund. Purpose is to reimburse the general fund for salaries of the data collectors doing their revaluation, budget line A, 1345.1 will be increased, $10,848 to clear deficit. The second budget transfer would be to transfer $20,700 from the fund that had been set aside from donations for the sand ring repair to the structure, and that amount will be used to cover the costs for stabilization as we move forward with the next phase being the roof replacement. So it would be appropriated from that fund line into this sand ring budget line in general, so it'd be $20,700. Is there a motion to authorize the budget adjustments and transfers?
So moved.
Second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Bund?
Yes.
Mr. Summerfield?
Yes.
Mr. Rindaz?
Yes, motion is carried. See, on the pilgrim pipeline lead agency, I think we've been at the board authorized the letter to go to the state.
Yeah, I don't know if everybody reviewed the letter that the town of Newburgh sent out, but the town of Newburgh sent out a fairly comprehensive letter as far as its objections to the thruway authority acting as co-lead agency with the DEC. You know, I don't know that the town of Cornwall is in a position to issue permits for the pilgrim pipeline. I suppose that's a matter of law that we'll have to look into down the road, but the time, if you're going to issue a letter in regard to the DEC has requested input on this, if you're going to issue a letter now is the time, so if the board's so inclined, I'll prepare a letter just like the town of Newburgh, and supervisor will decide it and send it out. But the letter, as I'm sure you all know, says DEC should be lead agency and not the thruway authority.
I don't think it hurts to go on the record, I mean, actually, this letter is soliciting our input, since we had written to them previously, and certainly with a focus on our interest in the town of Cornwall. So I would entertain a motion, authorize the attorney to forward that letter to the DEC.
So moved.
Second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Bund?
Yes.
Mr. Summerfield?
Yes.
Mr. Rindaz?
Yes, motion is carried. The other thing I added, which under the pilgrim pipeline is, the town is holding a meeting on the pilgrim pipeline. Senator Sam and a group that they have put together, really to provide information to the communities on the pilgrim pipeline project that's proposed. They have some speakers lined up that are fairly well versed in the topic. They have a brochure, and this is March 22nd at seven o'clock at Munder Cottage. We really encourage members of our community to come to Munder Cottage to hear this presentation. I've gone to, I think, two that they had in Newburgh, which I think Councilman Russell was at, one of them. It's something that we should really be very strong and forceful about. We're dealing with the bomb trains that run along the west shore of the Hudson River and certainly our eastern border, and now we're being challenged with this project that could have devastating impacts, both on our environment and also in the interest of public safety. If these pipelines are actually constructed to run along the New York State thruway, which runs right through Cornwall, right near two major aquifers in our community that many of our residents are served by, as well as the Moona and Woodbury. So the potential for any kind of an accident or incident, breach of that pipeline, could be disastrous, really, for the community. So I would encourage our residents to come out and gain as much information as you can so that we can really have a united front in opposing this project. I've talked to other supervisors and communities, there is not a single benefit to come to our community, or even the Hudson Valley, from this pipeline going in. It's strictly, it's big business looking to make as much money as they can, really, at the expense and the peril of the residents and community along that pipeline. So it's a double pipeline because it's going to bring the Bakken shale south, and then refined products in the second pipeline going north. So it really, it really could be disastrous for our community, and we really want to stay up on this as much as we can, and certainly, we're going to fight this every way that we can. We are encouraging certainly all the elected officials in all the communities to come together to really be a force and a voice to make sure that the public is aware of the threat that our communities do face. So please come out on March 22nd at seven o'clock at Munder Cottage to hear these presentations. Okay, we have community reports. Councilwoman.
Okay, well, the insurance, there's really not much going on right now. We removed the policy, we saved some money, we changed our category. The building department, do you want me to read all the numbers here? Permits issued?
Yeah, it's good information.
Permits issued was 13. CC issued 14, COs 1. Demolition permits, none. Blasting, none. On-site inspection, 52. Complaints investigated, 3. No stop order works, no stop work orders. One notice of violation. 17 fire inspections. Court appearances, none. Signs removed, 18. Permit fees were $2,331. Fees for municipal searches was $3,300. And planning board projects opened are 3. So that's the building department. And then the seniors, I have their calendar. It seems they go on trips every Tuesday locally. They're going on one, shopping to Middletown on Wednesday. I think they like the combination of in and out of town. We will be meeting, I think, to review, to get the best use of our senior program. That's one of the things we're going to be discussing Wednesday. So probably have more for you next month.
Thank you. Back to the summer field.
I'm the Economic Development Committee. Bill Brain has been elected chairman of that committee. I'm going to be acting as secretary, and Nancy Proyek has just been added today. The meetings will be held the last Wednesday of every month at seven o'clock here in the town hall conference room. Their recent, their first meeting was February 29th. Members were provided with a list of short, medium-term, and long-term economic development plans and strategies that were pulled from Comprehensive Plan and Glenwood Study to review. For this month's meeting, for this, for April's meeting, for the end of March, Wednesday, the 20-something, each member will select two short-term, two medium-term, and one long-term strategy. Final grouping will be assembled to focus so that the committee can focus its efforts on coming year with a very distinct group of projects. The committee will address these opportunities in addition, over the course of the year, in addition to addressing any issues or projects assigned to it by the town council. The intent being recognizing that some projects are more suitable for the municipality, while others are more suitable for private groups. They'll actually be pursuing or implementing projects and issues with the approval of the town council to approve a blueprint for the completion or of the, sorry, either to actually implement projects or issues, or to provide a blueprint for its completion as monies are available to complete the projects. And also to assist local groups to implement any suggested projects. The mission statement has been created for the council's consideration. Any proposed mods or rewrites can be discussed at the work session of our next meeting. I'll provide a copy for everybody, and you can, you can modify or edit it, and we can discuss what the final version will be. The Americans Main, America's Main Street Contest. There's a goal, there's a contest nationwide for best American Main Street, and Cornwall has joined it. Bill Brain submitted an application on our behalf, and I encourage everyone to go to the homepage of the Town of Cornwall website, where there's a link to vote for the Town of Cornwall's Main Street as best Main Street in the United States. You can vote as often as you want, you can only vote once a day, but vote often. It's going through, I think it's April 22nd, and there's a $25,000 prize for the winner, with a number of different prizes for second, third, fourth, fifth, and so forth. We also submitted for Strong Towns Contest. We weren't selected to be finalists in that. But what it did do was it provided a template for the, for the committee to help create an identity statement for the town, and to better understand the assets and the attributes that the town has, in an effort to create awareness and a presence on both online and in a variety of different ways to create more business development opportunities, as well as to attract the residents. The Conservation Committee, Carla Castillo is the chairwoman, she's here tonight. Secretary of Duties will be rotating among the members. Their meetings will be held the Wednesday following the town board work session. The committee has adopted the role of associated member status for several individuals who can't commit to being full-time members, but want to be on board to assist and provide support as needed or as they are able. The committee has voted to focus on several projects in the year ahead. The first is coming up on April 24th. It's still pending, we're waiting for approval from a couple of different municipalities. The Highway 218 Cleanup and Hike and Bike Day on Storm King Highway. The cleanup is going to be done early in the morning, 7 till 10, 8 till 11, something like that, with the bike hike occurring late morning to early mid-afternoon. You may recall that the bike and hike was done for a couple of different periods over 2013 and 14. It was always run by the Town of Highland, or at least sponsored by the Town of Highland. In this case, the Cornwall Lions Club is going to provide sponsorship, manpower, and publicity, in addition to providing insurance for the event. We will be submitting paperwork to the Town of Cornwall, to the Village of Cornwall and Hudson, as well as the Town of Highlands. And I think the only thing we really need to do at the moment to lock this down is to get the permission from the New York Department of Transportation to make sure that the road is closed. It's closed now, but will be closed on the day we need it closed. There are pre-cleanup images on Facebook on the Cornwall Conservation Advisory Committee group page. You might want to take a look at that, it's a real mess. Second, they're going to be completing an environmental inventory and a map to include all vegetation, trees, wetlands, protected lands, to better understand what assets the town has that need to be managed or protected. They will be, number three, promoting and requiring recycling at public events and within the schools and the town hall to reduce trash volumes and minimize litter. And finally, they will be looking at conducting a study of the steps, study of the steps required, and of the potential for creating a public greenway. A path along a public right-of-way, paved or packed recreational paths for bikes, walkers, hikers, strollers, et cetera, from Donahue Park to the high school and beyond, Salisbury Mills, and to Washingtonville. Within Cornwall, routes would include links to Salisbury Mills train station, area hiking trailheads, all in order to encourage health, recreation, green commuting, and fun. And it will also create, I believe, some economic development opportunities. The study will include legal structure alternatives, cost requirements, regional monies available, potential routes, and advantages and disadvantages developed by the experience by other communities who host such a program.
Thank you. Councilman Russell?
Recreation Department will leave in sun, March 30th, it's a Wednesday, departing at 8:30, returning by 6:30 p.m. It's $34 per person. The government photo is required, government photo ID is required, I'm sorry. And if the minimum of 30 is not met by the last day of registration on March 24th, trip will be canceled and full refunds will be in effect. Secondly, spots are still available for the Little Maestro program, which runs from March 3rd to April 14th, no class on March 24th. And there's groups of two, for two, five years old, and nine months, two years, three years to five. It's $55 per child, and script provided. And that's at Munder Cottage. Anybody who's interested in those two, the trip or the program, should contact Recreation. As far as sewer plant, from February, for Shore Road, routine maintenance was conducted. Also, they cleaned the sewer line on 9W and Laurel Avenue intersection to Laurel Avenue and Alfred Street. And as far as the areas of measurement, which is flow, biochemical oxygen demand, and total suspended solids are all within permit limits. For Fourth Cliff, again, routine maintenance was performed. Also for collection, they cleaned the BD Terrace pump station and the sewer line from Harold Avenue and BD Terrace. And all measured parameters were within permit limits. For the police department, for February 2016, I just have a statistical report, there were 735 calls for service, 7,734 miles were driven in total for the month, 28 motor vehicle accidents were reported, 26 alarms, combination of residential and business. There were 28 ambulance requests, 11 animal complaints, 19 disabled vehicle reports, 10 house checks, and 17 assists of other agencies. No further.
Thank you. Councilman Russell?
The highway department, it's called Whole Patch Townwide, Whole Patch temporary paving on the roads. Assistant sanitation department did winter maintenance, plowed, sanded, and salted for a total of six winter events thus far. Maintenance on the plow, sanders and equipment, clean trucks and equipment. Assisted at water main break, flooding at Curtis Court, rolled in sand for sand salt mix, and addressed safety repairs around the shop. The assessors' office, our two data collectors out of the four that we started with have been moving along the county, as you know, pulled back their, two data collectors and reassigned them to another municipality. They will be supplying the town with two data collectors shortly, but these are new data collectors and will need to be trained first. As of a week or two ago, a little over 2,500 parcels in town had been investigated, and trying to stay on the schedule that we're anticipating them to hold to. And that's all that happened.
Okay. Let's mention on the Sands Ring Board of Trustees, we did meet in late February, we're going to meet again later this month, and the trustees will select a chairperson to recommend to the town board for approval. And we're going to be looking again at a mission statement for the trustees, and we're hoping that we can keep the repairs, that Sands Ring moving forward, still targeting July 4th as the opening date to really get it back up and in use, and looking for the board of trustees and the friends with the town to really get full utilization of the building, as well as have expanded educational opportunities for the community. So I will ask for a motion on warrant number three?
So moved.
You're second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Bund?
Yes.
Mr. Summerfield?
Yes.
Mr. Rindaz?
Yes, motion is carried. And public comment, any, yes, call.
I wanted to comment on two things. First, I wanted to thank you for the background on the pilgrim pipeline. I think that's a very important issue that Cornwall faces in many communities in the area, and it's nice to hear the in-depth background that you provided for us. And then, secondly, on Councilman Russell's smart growth topic, I do think that's something that Cornwall is going to need to think about quite a bit in the future. The Hudson Valley is actually losing. Um, the Hudson Valley is actually losing population, or is holding quite steady, if not losing throughout the Hudson Valley, and transit-oriented development is a very important planning feature that has been applied in many communities that has made them more vibrant and has attracted a lot of population to areas that are not as vibrant as they once were be. Um, and it seems to me something that, um, that Cornwall should consider or think about very seriously because, um, I've heard constant conversation over the past year and a half and even longer over the vibrancy and the vitality of our Main Street, and having, uh, certain density of population will support our Main Street and therefore bring in more tax revenue to our community. So, yes, it is a balancing act, um, but I hope that the community doesn't just write off the entire concept, uh, because, uh, whether we like it or not, if we want to maintain, uh, remain attractive to folks who are younger than us, we will need to consider some of these, um, new planning policies that are proving to be very effective elsewhere. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Um, Nancy Bryan, uh, Town of Cornwall. I'm, I'm still rather confused, um, by Peter Russell's letter that he, I guess it was a letter to you that you had prepared. Um, I, I sat here and I thought you were reading someone else's statement for them that they had sent to you. Um, this is an extremely intelligent and eloquent, well-spoken board. Um, I'm just confused as to why anyone would, who sits on the board, wouldn't feel comfortable enough, and I'm not saying you're not comfortable enough, to speak at a meeting when topics come up as opposed to during the public comment section, because, um, just, in my opinion is, while you are all members of the public, you sit on the town board. I would think that that shouldn't be the time when you comment, that you would feel free to comment during discussion over the course of however many years you sit on the board. Um, and, and I'm still rather confused by that. Um, I would hope that moving forward, that if any of you feel very strongly, as, you know, Peter, you expressed very well your opinions on things, and that anyone would speak during those discussions and not wait for a written statement to present it during the public comment period. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Yeah, Peter, in the village, this is sort of minor point, but the 218, uh, is closed now, as, as we know, but this Sunday, there were, I think it was an accident Route 9W, but I've seen it happen before. The signage is not good enough to let people know that the road is closed, so everybody goes right to the end of 218, sees the sign, knows it's closed, and turns around, so that, I must have been 30, 40 cars in a period of an hour. So I don't know if we can do anything about it, that's why my question is, is, or if we have to go to the state, but the sign is on the left, the cars are turning over, are going to the right, they're curving around with, right by the, um, the, the park there, the Donahue Park. So they're turning right, the sign is out, and people aren't seeing it. So people go all the way to the end, turn around and, and come all the way back. I just don't know if it can be done anything by the town, or the state has to be involved.
Sign that the 9W pays it.
Well, there is one there. There's one, there's one on player.
That they don't keep it updated.
Well, they usually flip it when, when it is closed, they're supposed to come to flip it, but I think you're talking about, there is one down in the village. There is one, but as I say, it's a red, it's a black and white sign, you just can't, you don't notice it because you want to, you're, you're veering right. I'm thinking if something were in orange or something like that, you know, road closed ahead, it's a simple thing, but I mean, there are literally 40, 50 cars in an hour, just going back to, I'll go for a walk. I mean, I don't know if we can do anything about it, or if something has to go through, I just, I wanted to mention it because it seems like a needless, two cars go zipping back and forth.
I, I'll talk to the mayor.
Yeah, okay.
You know, you can talk to the DOT and, or something differently.
Anyone else? Here we go, one, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved, second, roll call.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. McInnes?
Yes.
Ms. Bund?
Yes.
Mr. Summerfield?
Yes.
Mr. Andez?
Yes, motion is carried. Thank you very much, and have a great, uh, thank you.